Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 8, 2020 meeting of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. Please note, however, this meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 18 and will also is also being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. Also, I would like to add, ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It is all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify the Chair. I'll wait a few seconds to see if there's any response. All right. And now I would just, before we get started, I would just like to read a few points about our remote participation procedure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, and the conference ID number is 1-853-62879 pound. So that number again is 508-945-4410, and the conference ID number is 1-853-62879 pound. You can also join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams on your computer through the link that is in the agenda posted on the town website. And I'll also just note that despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, but we are at the moment. But we will be posting a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Also, I do want to note that in accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the Chair. And also because we are conducting this meeting remotely, we do need to follow these procedures a bit more rigorously. There should only be one speaker speaking at a time, and that is the speaker who is recognized by the Chair. I will ask all other meeting participants, if you are not speaking, could you kindly mute your computer or your telephone and turn off your computer video? Then when recognized by the Chair, unmute your computer or your telephone, and if you're on computer, you can also certainly turn on your video. When recognized the Chair, we will ask everyone to identify themselves by name, and if you are calling in on the telephone, please also give the last four digits of your phone number. We just need to be able to clearly identify each speaker. Also, for, for the planning board proceedings, I will first, when we start, I will do a roll call of all board members present so that we know who's present. I will also ask, when we get to sections where there's discussion or comments by the planning board, I will again go through each planning board member by name and call on you for your comments or questions or discussion. When we do votes, we will need to do a roll call vote. I will ask, I will say your name, then please repeat your name, planning board members, and then speak out your vote. So we need to do all votes by the planning board by roll call. And let me just see if there's any other points that I need to cover regarding remote participation. At the end of the meeting, we will adjourn and close, and we will note the time of adjournment. I think that's it. All right. So again, before we get started, we have for this meeting, we've placed the Chairman Chairman's comments at the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end. We would like to let everyone in the public know that currently we have six members of the planning board. This is a volunteer board, a volunteer regulatory board of the Town of Chatham, and we do require another member. So if you are interested in volunteering to become a member of the planning board, there is a place on the town website. And also a way to submit your information to our town talent bank so that you could be considered as a volunteer, member of the planning board to serve on the board. So if you would be interested in that, we just wanted to let you know that we do have a vacancy, and we would welcome citizens of the Town of Chatham who would be interested in serving the town as a volunteer in this way. Again, I'd like to ask everyone, if you're not speaking, would you kindly turn off your video and mute your telephones or computer? I'll go on to our next agenda item.
Catherine, this is Ally. Sorry, before you go, yes, the roll call.
Yes, my apologies, and thank you, Ally, for your reminder. But before we go to the first agenda item, let me just do a roll call of the board. So Arthur Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
And Bob Wertschfter, present?
Bob Wertschfter, present.
And Bob Dubus, present?
Bob Dubus, present.
And Warren Chain, present?
Warren Chain, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern, and I am also present. Our Vice Chair, Tom Gagin, is not in attendance tonight. All right. So then in that case, may we go on to the minutes from the May 12 meeting? And again, I will go through the board and ask if there are any amendments, comments, additions, changes to the May 12 minutes. Did we receive those now? Yes, they are in this packet. So Art Spru, any changes or additions to our minutes from May 12?
Art Spru, no changes, no additions to the minute.
Thank you. Bob Dubus, any changes, additions?
Bob Dubus, no changes, no additions.
Thank you. Bob Wertschfter, any changes or additions to our minutes from May 12?
No changes, no additions.
Thank you. And Warren Chain, any changes, additions to the May 12 minutes?
No changes, no additions.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern. I also have no changes or additions. So may I have a motion to approve the May 12 minutes?
Bob Wertschfter, move.
Bob Dubus, second it.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru, how do you vote?
Art Spru, approve minutes.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve the minutes.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve the minutes.
And Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I vote to approve.
Thank you. Again, this is Catherine Halpern, the Chair, and I'm just going to announce again, if everyone who's not speaking, kindly mute your computer or your phone, and also turn off the computer video. We were getting a little bit of feedback there, and I'll ask Mark and Craig if they can take a look and see if, because I do hear feedback. Mark and Craig, can you take a look and see if there's anything that can be done to improve it?
This is Mark, Channel 18. I'm not hearing any feedback in my feed.
Okay, all right. Great. Thank you. So Catherine Halpern, again speaking, will go on to the next agenda item in that case. And this is a public hearing which is continued from May 26. And this is a public hearing continued from our May 26 meeting, which is in regards to the extension of the GB 1 zone. This is in regards to a citizen's petition for a protective zoning bylaw amendment. This article would extend the GB 1 zone on the northerly side of Main Street between Old Harbor Road and the westerly property line of 628 Main Street, Black Dog, from an existing depth, excuse me, of 150 feet northerly from Main Street to 260 feet northerly from Main Street, and thereby include in the GB 1 zone a portion of the land at 22 Old Harbor Road. Now, this is a continuation of the public hearing, so we do not need to read the public notice formally again. However, since there are some new correspondence to be read in the record, and also as a courtesy to the applicant, we will go through some of the public hearing proceedings from the beginning. First, I will ask the applicant if you have any additional information to present to the board and to the public.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman. At this point, Bill Litchfield, were you recognized me? I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Yes, I'm recognizing you, Bill Litchfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Ray and Judy Braz of the Old Harbor Inn, who are also with us today. To very, very briefly recap what we are proposing, as shown on the screen that Ally has up, we're proposing to extend the GB zone on the north side of Main Street from its existing depth of 150 feet to 260 feet. There's nothing magical about the existing 150, and in fact, if you look across Old Harbor Road on the screen, you'll note that the GB 2 zone where Cumberland Farms is extends further back, and if you go a couple of lots further to the west, the GB zone on the far side of the community center goes considerably further depth. In any event, we are all aware of the loss of rooms. The Brazes have run a successful lodging house business for a quarter of a century and would like to expand it by building a structure with six additional rooms on the 27,000 square foot, give or take lot that they have. Over the last four years, we've talked with Ally and her predecessors and the building inspector and others about the feasibility of doing so under a special permit for a change or alteration of a non-conforming use. That because of court cases that came down a number of years ago is not realistically a possibility. Alternatively, we could ask for a variance, which while difficult is something that we could do if it were our only course. We thought, however, that a, and I should back up and say that during the time the Brazes have run the Inn, it's been run without any complaints about noise or lighting or otherwise. So in considering options, we thought that one way to allow the Brazes to apply for a special permit but to retain municipal authority would be to zone, have town, ask the town meeting rezone most, but not all of their property, general business. As you know, as the planning board knows, we have a provision in our bylaw which says when we have split zones, a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals can allow extension of the use allowed in the more, the more intense use, i.e. the GB zone into the residential zone. The reason we didn't go or ask for the full extent of the lot is exactly what I think we all want, which is neighborhood input into what might happen there. So in thinking about it, we thought about the concept of extending the GB zone northerly to include most, as I said, but not all. There were discussions at the last hearing about spot zoning, and I know there was correspondence in that regard. If you ran a few hundred feet up northerly in Old Harbor Road, you'd find so-called spot zoning where the corner of Depot Road is zoned. This is not spot zoning. Spot zoning would be to pick a building in, in North Chatham or West Chatham in the middle of a residential zone, completely unattached to a general business zone, and propose that it be rezoned. We're not proposing that. But we understand the concerns that the neighbors have and toward that, which were expressed clearly. And toward that end, Ray spoke with or telephoned most, if not all. I know there was at least one he had not yet reached to express exactly what's going on or what is proposed to go on. Should also point out that I suspect some of you have seen a conceptual site plan sketch prepared back in 2016, which is that one, which is by no means set in stone. That was simply for information, and it's not anything definitive. We recognize, of course, that at the last hearing, the planning board, before I talk about that, I should say that Ray listened to neighborhood concerns, and if this goes forward, we will do our best to address them. Some of the concerns, I think Ray was able to address, but I know there were butters here who can speak for themselves. At the last hearing, a number of members of the planning board said, yes, we understand why the Brazes want to do this, and we know we've lost, you know, the Dolphin and the Bradford and lots of other rooms downtown, but we're concerned about what else might happen. We may be fairly confident with Ray and Judy, and we think that with site plan review and a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, that there would be sufficient safeguards for the neighborhood, but we have concerns about recommending to town meeting that the general business zone be extended. So it occurred to me that there might be a solution to that particular concern on the part of the planning board, and that is the notion of reversionary zoning, which is something that Chatham has done on several occasions, not recently, but in 1984, we rezoned half a dozen locations in town. And that zoning change was only in effect for a short time. In order to give the planning board and something we had at the time, a zoning study committee, time to do what it needed to do, which is to look at the broader issue. What I'm thinking of here is that if we go forward with this, and parenthetically, tomorrow night, the board of selectmen is likely to confirm something that I suggested to you at the last hearing, that this won't really be going forward in June 22. But assuming that happens, if we were to move it and the voters approved it, we could craft it so that the R 20 zone would be restored or reversionary, and that the, by that time, the Old Harbor Inn might be able to obtain a special and that by that time, the Old Harbor Inn might be able to obtain a special permit from the zoning board of appeals with appropriate constraints, which would then have the inn revert to non-conforming status. That would mean that basically that use and only that use would be allowed. If anybody wanted to try to convert it to, you know, a bank or anything else or a gift shop, it would not be allowed. We recognize that there are still concerns on the part of the neighbors. We will continue to work with them to see if that, if we can address them. Again, the plan that Ally showed is not anything that has been filed. I know the Department of Community Development has received numerous inquiries about when is the plan going to be heard? There is no plan. That's a concept. It is by no means set in stone. It's not been filed with the zoning board of appeals, for that matter with your board, only for informational purposes. We do think, however, that this is a valid or viable business, a well-run business. As I said, we've had no constraint, no complaints over the years. I'm not trying to do an ad for the Old Harbor Inn, but it is extremely well rated by TripAdvisor and other similar entities. We think it could continue to be a well-run business with the addition of six rooms at the southeast or the corner of the 27,000 square foot lot. That is essentially where we are, Madam Chairman, as the board suggested. We met and talked with those neighbors with whom we had not spoken. Several neighbors had been consulted well in advance, including the most, we think, the closest neighbor historically, which is the neighbor on the north side of the inn. I regret that we didn't reach out to everyone in the neighborhood. I would also point out that there were some issues about notice, and as the chair knows and the planning board knows, the applicant doesn't do the notices. So if people weren't advised, I regret that. It was certainly nothing of our doing. We live in an imperfect world, one which has made, been made particularly imperfect over the last two or three months in terms of pandemic. That, Madam Chairman, is essentially where we are. We hope that with the consideration of the reversionary zoning, the planning board might feel more comfortable about the proposal, which ultimately is yet far from being cast in stone. And I don't know whether Mr. and Mrs. Braz want to offer anything, Madam Chairman, if they would like to, perhaps this would be an opportune time.
Yes, if the owners have new information. Remember, this is a continuation of the public hearing that was begun on May 26. So what we would like to see is if there's any new information that you wish to present to the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Ray.
Yes, please go ahead, and please introduce yourself, Ray.
Okay. This is Ray Braz. My wife Judy and I own the Old Harbor Inn, have for the past quarter century. There is, we have had extensive discussions with the neighbors. Most of them weren't aware of the details. They are aware of the details now. Some of them were not aware of the revisionary provision. You know, the only thing we'd like to add is it's been our neighborhood for twenty, quarter of a century, and it will still be our neighborhood when the proposal, if and when the proposal is agreed to. So we're just hoping to keep it in the family and keep it, keep it a good, small, well-run family business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braz. All right. So let's go on. I will go through the steps of the public hearing procedures, even though we have covered these, just because we do have some new correspondence, et cetera. So I'll, now we would have board questions and comments. I will just go through the members of the board and see if you have any new questions or comments that you'd like to add. So Art Spru, do you have any questions or comments?
Art Spru. Catherine, I still have the same questions and concerns that I had voiced last week, and it's associated with the significant change when you go to a GB1 associated with setbacks and lot coverage, and also parking setbacks. It's, it's much different than what is out there today. And I'm concerned that that is going to change the character of the neighborhood. So I'm not sure how that can get addressed associated with this, because once it goes into the GB1, somebody can come along and redo a lot of things to that new criteria. It's still, it still appears to be the major concern that I have.
Okay. Thank you, Art. And Bob Wurchafter, questions or comments you'd like to present at this time?
No, I'm waiting to hear from both sides on this. I don't have anything myself for that.
Okay, thank you. And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I have no questions or comments at this time, but I want to reserve my comments and questions to the board.
Thank you, Bob. And Warren Chain?
Yes, this is Warren Chain. I have a question for Mr. Litchfield. Just to clarify my understanding of what he was explaining with respect to the consequences of reversionary zoning. I was understanding it to be that any future change of use of that property from the current use as an inn would trigger a reversion to it being a non-conforming residential property or lot. Is that correct?
Largely.
Mr. Litchfield, please introduce yourself.
I apologize. Bill Litchfield responding to Mr. Chain, if I may, Madam Chairman. The, the, if this were to go forward, the motion on town meeting floor would be that the zoning change would expire on, pick a date, December 31, 2021, after which the zoning would become R20 as it is today. What would occur in the interim, we hope, is that an application would be filed with your board for site plan review and with the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Project would, if it got permitted, would then go forward. It would then, after December 31, 2021, or whatever else, be in our 20 zone, and the use could not change without, it would, highly unlikely there could ever be any dimensional changes, and any change of use would require approval by the municipal boards. I'm not sure they're answered perfectly. It, it, it wouldn't revert to, if the Old Harbor Inn closed tomorrow or five years from now and didn't have a business for the course of, over the course of two years, the use were abandoned, it would be in our 20 zone. It would be, the non-conforming use would disappear.
So you would end up with, when it reverts, it would be a non-conforming property, but be it one that has been expanded during the interim, and therefore, you know, would be available for some subsequent owner to apply for a special permit that would be no more deleterious to the neighborhood than what had been there before, which would be an expanded inn.
Mr. Litchfield, do you want to respond?
I want to, I want to try. The, there are some complex, thank you. There are some complexities in regard to what can be done via a special permit versus what has to be done by a variance. But if, if the, if the zoning were changed, the Old Harbor Inn received its permits, the zoning then reversed to R20, it could continue on operating under those permits with appropriate controls and conditions. It would be in our 20 zone then, just as it is now.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is, this is Catherine Halpern. I actually have a follow-up question to Warren's. Would it, however, would all the dimensions, as well as the use, if this reversionary zoning was considered, be grandfathered in? And then there would be some, what's the word, ability for those, for that use, as well as the dimensional changes, which are significant, to continue forward as long as there was no, what's the word, breaking for two years? That it could allow them to continue forward, even once the zoning reverted, so to speak, back to residential? Mr. Litchfield, do you want to comment on that?
That is correct, just as, for instance, Chatham Bar's Inn continues on. Now, Chatham Bar's Inn is a, purely in a residential zone, and it can continue on in its current use ad infinitum because it is grandfathered. We would be grandfathered, but only to the degree that permits constrain and limited what could occur then. And I would, I would suggest one, one further aspect in, in response to, maybe Mr. Spru's question or comment. Planning board could consider, instead of GB1, GB2. The setbacks in the GB2 zone differ from those, differ significantly from those in GB1. So you are the planning board, and when you conduct a public hearing, you can obviously do whatever you will under the statute. But the proposed change to GB1 was simply because the contiguous property is GB1 to the south. However, if Anna Lee would be kind enough to bring back that neighborhood chart, you will note that literally across the street, there is a GB2 zone, a different depth. GB2 might be more palatable, and that would certainly be within the scope of the petitioned article. So there are many options.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Litchfield. This is Catherine again, and we're going through the board. I think have, has everyone had a chance to speak for, I think everyone has now for any new comments or discussion, every board member? Again, this is Catherine Halpern. I just want to make one comment, and I made it last May 26 during the public hearing, and I may make it again. But I just want to remind the board and the public that what the board will consider tonight, if and when we close the public hearing and begin formal deliberations in order to vote, is that we will be considering whether or not we vote yes or no to recommending a citizen's petition for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment to change this particular parcel as outlined to GB1 from residential zoning. That's all we're voting on. We are not voting on the site plan. We are not voting on, even though it's a conceptual site plan. We are not even, although there's a lot been spoken about, the intention of the current owners, the Brazes, what they intend to do with that new zoning, and even showing us the conceptual site plan, we are actually not considering that at this time. We are just considering rezoning that parcel to GB1 as proposed in the citizen's petition for zoning bylaw amendment, and we are only considering whether the planning board recommends it or does not recommend it. We don't have to have a unanimous vote. You can also abstain and have an abstention. There's also the possibility that if the majority of the planning board, for example, votes, abstains in voting, that there's a neutral vote, that there's no recommendation one way or the other from the planning board. So I just wanted to clarify that procedural issue just a bit before we go to the next step of the public hearing procedures, and that is with public statements in favor of the application. I will ask if there's any member of the public who is connected to the call who would like to speak in favor of the application. I will mention that we do have several letters in hand in favor of the application. And if you are connected and you'd like to speak in favor, I could, and you've sent in a letter, you would have your choice. Either I could read your letter or you could speak. So I'll just ask any members of the public who would like to speak. I'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone speaks up.
I would like to speak. I'm Susannah Nickerson.
Yes, and are you speaking in favor of the application, Susannah?
Oh, no, I'm not.
All right, then let's wait a moment, because that'll be a little later on in the public hearing. So again, yes.
I would like to speak in favor.
Thank you. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, and I'll turn on the video.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Madam Chair, members of committees, thank you. My name is Tom Hitchner. I am with my wife Madonna. We live at 30 Old Harbor Road. So we are the neighbors immediately to the north of the Old Harbor Inn. In fact, we share the entire northern, what is the northern boundary of the Old Harbor property is our southern boundary. I want to speak in favor of a limited expansion of the inn, but not a perpetual zoning change. Let me start by saying that our experience with the inn, and we've lived here 10 years, our experience with the inn has been that it's been a very good neighbor. And Ray and Judy have been extremely conscientious, and, and we've always been pleased to be next to the inn. In fact, I would say that we feel pretty sure that Ray and Judy want the same things for the neighborhood that we want, the same kind of attributes, peace and quiet, you know, low levels of light, appropriate architecture, and attractive landscaping, and you can tell that from their property. But I also know it because when Cumberland Farms was before your committee for approval of its new building several years ago, Ray and Judy joined Madonna and I in speaking to the committee about the limitations that we wanted in that plan and the changes to that plan to lower light levels, ensure quiet, and ensure appropriate architecture. And Ray and Judy worked with us. They wanted that because it's good for their business. It's, it's what they want for the neighborhood, and we were very much in agreement. And I would like to say that I, for one, am satisfied with what was done with Cumberland Farms, and I want to thank the committee for its work on that, as well as the other town committees that, that participated in making some very substantial changes to that, that plan. So let me say that in terms of with the, with the inn, we have had minor issues with the inn simply about outside lighting. We've had no real issue with noise, and in fact, are rather amazed at how quiet the guests are in leaving the inn late at night on the gravel driveway that separates our property from the inn. And we, we, we scratch our heads a little bit about the noise that other people say they haven't experienced. In fact, we wonder if what has been mostly heard is noise from the apartments that sit above the shops on Main Street, because we've heard that noise, as well as bands, et cetera, which we all, we accept as part of the vitality of the town. But it could be that by building this addition, it would actually block the noise from those apartments from reaching many of the neighbors. So it would be a positive development. But in, in conclusion, we do think that there needs to be substantial neighborhood and town control in any change that happens in the addition of the six rooms. And GB1, and particularly, we, we need that control longer term and not to have a permanent GB1 designation. But I can tell from the committee that many members of the committee feel the same thing. The process of approving variances in, under current zoning would give us that kind of control, but Mr. Litchfield has, has said that that doesn't seem to be possible. I would like to reserve some judgment on the reversionary zoning idea that has been presented because it's not clear to me what control the neighborhood and the committees would have in the interim period when it is GB1, and what kind of input we would have on landscaping, lot lines, et cetera, you know, parking, surface of the drive and such things. So, you know, I think that needs to be fleshed out more. It's also not It's also not clear to me, under the split zone proposal, whether within the part of the property that is all GB1, whether there is any additional control that the neighborhood has through the split zone. For some reason, it's been chosen to extend the zoning 110 feet. Why not extend it just into the property a little bit so that it can be considered under the split zone requirements without allowing the proposed building to be entirely within the GB1 zoning? Thanks, thanks for your attention. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hitzner. This is Catherine Halpern again. Again, I just want to remind everyone, if you're connected to the call, would you kindly mute your microphone if you're on the computer, mute your phone if you're on the phone, and if you are connected by Microsoft Teams on the computer, if you're not speaking, would you kindly turn off your video? All of those things help a great deal. And with that, could I ask, are there any other members of the public connected to the call who would like to speak in favor of this application? All right, this is Catherine Halpern again, not hearing anyone. We'll go to the next step, and I do have some correspondence to read that has come in since the last meeting. We did on May 26 read some correspondence into the record and we've received some new correspondence since then. I will not reread last meeting's correspondence. So for new correspondence in support of the application, here's the first one. I am writing to support, this is from Susan Carroll, and she's at 29 Blueberry Lane in Chatham. I am writing to support Judy and Ray Braz and their ability to expand their wonderful Old Harbor Inn. The Brazes are amazing innkeepers and their quest to have more space for visitors to our town is just stunning. I've worked with them for many years to supply amenities for their inn and their business sense and thoughtful welcoming to their guests is a treat. Please call me or email me with any questions or thoughts. If you would like this support in hard copy version, which we have now, I would be pleased to fill that need and mail this off to you. And this again is from Susan Carroll, 29 Blueberry Lane. She is the production manager at Chatham Candy Manor. Our second letter in support is from Danielle and Bob, Danielle Jean-Lot and Bob Zeremba, and they are at 1409 Main Street. Ray and Judy Braz, owners for the Old Harbor Inn, have proposed a good quality expansion of their inn. They live and work in their building and hope that their son will take over the business when they retire. Chatham has lost many lodging businesses in our downtown to high-cost private homes. The many hotels like the Bradford, the Dolphin Inn, the Moorings, and all the guest houses in the Old Village, except for the Surfside, are gone. Lodging in the center of Chatham encourages walking and supports local stores and restaurants. The Chatham Strategic Plan calls for density in village centers. This is an example of how you can help a local business thrive that will help the community at large. The Brazes are philanthropic, thoughtful people who pay good wages, provide quiet and elegant lodging, and are model citizens who volunteer in the community and take care of their property. Thank you for your consideration, Danielle and Bob. And the next letter in support is from Carol Gordon of the Nantucket House at 2647 Main Street. I am writing in support of Judy and Ray Braz's request to add on to their property known as the Old Harbor Inn. Ray and Judy have been an integral part of Chatham for 25 years. I am sure their addition will be in good taste and keep in mind the concerns of the community. I hope their request will be approved. Thank you, Carol Gordon. And again, I have one more in support, and this is from John and Joan Taylor of Indian Hill Road in Chatham. Ray and Judy Braz, owners for the Old Harbor Inn, have proposed an expansion of their inn that they have owned for over 24 years. They live and work in their building and hope that their son will take over the business when they retire. Chatham has lost many lodging businesses in our downtown to high-cost private homes. The many hotels like the Bradford, Dolphin Inn, the Moorings, and all of the guest houses in the Old Village, except for the Surfside, are gone. Lodging in the center of Chatham encourages walking and supports local stores and restaurants. The Chatham Strategic Plan calls for density in village centers. This is an example of how you can help a local business thrive that will help the community at large. Frankly, we were very surprised when we were told years ago that the Old Harbor Inn, steps away from the Chatham Rotary, was not in the business district and not subject to HBDC regulations. The Brazes are philanthropic, thoughtful people who pay good wages, provide quiet and elegant lodging, and are model citizens who volunteer in the community and take care of their property. We urge your support of this change in zoning. And now I have a few new letters in opposition to this proposal. I will not read the previous letters. The first one is from Brenda and Dave Thompson at 27 Dugans Pond Lane. We wanted to let the planning board know that we remain strongly opposed to the request for change in zoning to benefit the owners of the Old Harbor Inn at 22 Old Harbor Road. It would be such a mistake to start granting this zoning in residential neighborhoods. The change in zoning would only benefit those who own 22 Old Harbor Road. We object to an increase of commercial property in our neighborhood, especially with concerns of more traffic at a very busy, precarious intersection and a lot less green space buffering Main Street. We heard from Mr. Braz and have heard his plea for increasing his commercial property in case his grandchild would like to run a hotel. Intense change, as with what we have been through just recently, properties are being flipped for personal gain all over town. We sincerely hope that the changes do not happen. Respectfully, Brenda and Dave Thompson. One moment. I believe this one was read previously. This was read previously. So this next one is from Ginny Nickerson at 30 Bittersweet Lane in North Chatham. I am writing in opposition of a proposed protective zoning bylaw change which will extend the ZB1 zone from behind 628 Main Street, currently the Black Dog, to 22 Old Harbor Road, the Old Harbor Inn. My concern is if GB1 is granted for one business on Old Harbor Road, that in the future, other businesses on Old Harbor Road will apply for the same zoning changes one by one. Also, once 22 Old Harbor Road becomes GB1 and is sold in the future, what will the zoning change allow? If we look down Main Street, we see many buildings being built up and out with the lots being maximized to the fullest use. Also, if voted to accept, will the zoning change affect the ability for the building capacity at 628, 636, and 640, and I think they mean, she means Main Street, to expand over and above what they are now allowed by law to do at present? One last thought, the area in the back is a haven for what is left of our wildlife in downtown Chatham. It would be a shame to see this habitat destroyed. Thank you for your consideration, Ginny Nickerson. This next one is from Abe and Suzanne Batika. Based on a recent telephone conversation with Mr. Braz of 22 Old Harbor Road on Monday, June 1, 2020, we wish to inform the planning board that our position remains the same as stated in our May 26, 2020, letter to the planning board. Therefore, we continue to object to the extension of the GB1 zone and oppose to any proposed zoning change for 22 Old Harbor Road. Sincerely, Abe and Suzanne Batika. This next one is from Florence Reynolds at 44 Old Harbor Road. It has come to my attention that the owners of the present Old Harbor Inn want to enlarge their commercial business by requesting a change in the zoning. My father, H.F. Reynolds, built that house for Dr. Carol Keen back in the early 1930s. Good old Dad was very careful to build houses appropriate to the area, that is Cape Cod-style cottages. Old Harbor Road was always essentially residential. Many houses were private homes of sea captains. Dr. Keen's house was designed to fit in this area, but with the necessary addition to accommodate his medical practice. I am strongly opposed to the zoning change requested and to an increase to the size of the commercial inn at 22 Old Harbor Road. That section of Route 28 is already a traffic hazard. To me, the change would be detrimental to this lovely neighborhood. Respectfully, Florence Reynolds. And two more. This one is from Kevin Steinhauer. My wife, Susan Steinhauer, and myself, Kevin Steinhauer, own a house on 37 Seaview Street. We oppose the proposed addition of the Old Harbor Inn. We purchased our house in 1999 and have enjoyed many nice days and evenings on our deck. We face Dugans Pond and back up to the Nickerson property. This is a sanctuary that should not be disrupted for the addition of a parking lot and additional building. This also would set a bad precedent for future building on this type of restricted property in town. Chatham is a quaint town that is losing the charm due to overbuilding. The lighting, which would ruin the darkness in the night, does not belong on this property. The owners who have a charming and well-kept inn bought this property knowing the strict zoning that Chatham had. It should not be changed. Sincerely, the Steinhowers. And final correspondence is from Carlo Chafi, sole member of DPRD LLC. Honorable members of the Town of Chatham Planning Board, as you now know, I am the owner of the residential property located at 38 Dugans Pond Road, Chatham, Massachusetts. By letter dated May 26, 2020, I wrote this board to register my objection to the proposed amendment to the protective bylaw, changing the ZB1 zone from 150 feet to 260 feet. Since that letter, I have had the opportunity to attend the board's May 26 virtual meeting, and first and foremost, I wanted to thank the board for reading my letter into the record. The meeting provided some answers to questions I had and was informationally helpful, but also quite troubling in many respects. This letter is to augment and clarify my previously stated objections, and I respectfully ask that this also be added to the record. There seems to be a fundamental blending of the proposed change to the protective bylaw and the project proposed by my neighbor, seeking to expand the present non-conforming use as a bed and breakfast to within five feet of our property line. While there was some discussion of these as two wholly separate initiatives, the meeting showed me that they are indeed inextricably linked. The proposed change to the town zoning is not the result of studies and planning contemplating its potential precedent and wide-ranging effects, but rather an attempt by a specific project applicant to expand an existing non-conforming use under circumstances where a variance may not be legally available and without seemingly the requirement of notice to the affected homeowners. I only learned of the proposed zone change through the kindness of other concerned neighbors and was not notified by the town when I routinely do receive notice of proximate variances. It is concerning to me that I would not be provided notice of a zone change proposed to clear the way for development to be expanded to the commercial setback of five feet from my property line. To be clear, I am opposed to both the proposed zoning change and the underlying project it seeks to particularly accommodate. I will discuss both the zone change and the proposed project at 22 Old Harbor Road in this letter. First, relative to the zoning change itself and said simply, a change to zoning, particularly to undermine such a well-established protective bylaw with potentially wide-reaching effects should not be the solution to allow the expansion of commercial development where a variance is not available or deemed impracticable. Attorney Litchfield claimed multiple times in the meeting that the depth of the GB1 zone was arbitrary. I strongly disagree. The protective bylaw is the present law and has been for over 60 years. It has been central to and successful in fostering the town's character and prosperity over a long duration. It seems much more likely that the architects of the protective bylaw chose the present depth based on the historical size and depth of the structures and businesses comprising the street wall along Main Street. It seems ill-advised to declare successful planning as arbitrary and undue years of balance to accommodate one proposed project, however minor that encroachment may seem to some. It is not coincidence that the depth proposed in the zoning change is the exact depth needed to accommodate the proposed project. Rather, that measurement would seem to be a misguided substitute for the present equilibrium. It should also be noted, Attorney Litchfield stated that the owners of 624 Main Street, the Chatham Hardware Store, were approached to add their property to the proposed ZB1 zone change but declined. If this property is not needed for the proposed expansion of 22 Old Harbor Road, why are the owners asked to include their property to the proposed zone change? The addition of 624 Main Street would have done nothing but add to the creep of commercial development into traditionally residential spaces. Second, as to the project itself, I have seen the proposed project drawings and it is not an insignificant one in scope, and it would allow a setback of five feet, much less than that allowed in a residential neighborhood. The lot coverage appears to be at or near the maximum for commercial zoning. It also appears that the new structure to be built would be closer to my residence than it would be to the current inn on Old Harbor Road, forever changing the residential character of my property and my neighbors' respective properties. While I was at this board's request contacted by the applicant petitioner subsequent to the May 26, 2020 meeting, I would like to note that I am the only direct abutter not contacted by the applicant petitioner prior to the May 26 meeting. The only direct abutters contacted prior to the May 26, 2020 meeting were owners of property on Main Street or Old Harbor Road. The general lack of notice regarding the proposed zone change is very troubling to me. Attorney Litchfield stated that the project is supported by the town's comprehensive plan, mentioning a decreased reliance on automobiles and the ability to walk to shops. I disagree with this analysis. I believe the proposed project and the proposed zone change to allow it is in direct conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan's goal under Land Use Section 1.1 states, and here he's quoting from the comprehensive plan, "to permit only that growth and development that is consistent with the carrying capacity of town's natural environment in order to maintain the quality of life in our town. Chatham should retain its small-town and seaside resort character, and any development should maintain that, not minimize or destroy it. Promote the redevelopment and reuse of existing developed property rather than the development of vacant land. Bylaws and regulations should be created to ensure that intensity is maintained or minimized and never maximized." The comprehensive plan proceeds to state that to reach the above goals, and again, this is a quote, "zoning bylaws should be created to limit the expansion of non-conforming residential units and to prevent increased nonconformity," and this is Land Use 9. residential units and to prevent increased nonconformity," and this is Land Use 9. This is the end of the quotes from the comprehensive plan, continuing with Mr., I believe it's pronounced Choffi's, letter. Attorney Litchfield also stated that the proposed project of 22 Old Harbor Road fits into the purpose and intent of the protective bylaws, referencing sections including commerce, tourism, and preservation for the citizens of their right to their customary means of earning a living. It is important to note that I am not before the board seeking to end the current nonconforming use, and therefore, I am not making any challenge to the applicant petitioner's right to earn a living, as he has done for the past 25 years. However, I have a corresponding right to not have my residential premises be subject to commercial expansion that is contrary to the existing comprehensive bylaw. The protective bylaw has extensive language. Section 1, General Provisions, regarding all buildings and structures shall be in conformity with provisions of the protective bylaw. Any building not in conformity must go before the zoning board of appeals. Also, Section 5 of the protective bylaw deals specifically with nonconforming lots, buildings, and uses. One can argue that certain pieces of the bylaw may apply to the proposed project at 22 Harbor Road, but I feel the project as a whole, under its current zoning, does not meet the overriding purpose or intent of the protective bylaw. The proposed zoning change is nothing more than an attempt to expand an already nonconforming use. The precedential effect of doing so by zone change without global careful study and planning cannot be overstated. My opposition to both the proposed zone change and the underlying project remain. Additionally, I respectfully and formally request written notice of all future hearings and proceedings related to the proposed project and/or the zone change. Your continued courtesy in this matter is appreciated. Very truly yours, Carlo Choffi. That's C-I-O-F-F-I. I hope I am pronouncing that correctly. So, that is all the new correspondence. And now, we will go to the next point in the public hearing, which is public statements opposing the application. If there are any members of the public connected to this call, if you wish to speak in opposition to the application, please unmute your phone or your computer and state your name and ask to be recognized by the chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, may I ask who's speaking, please?
This is Carlo Choffi, 28 or 38 Dugans Pond Road.
Yes, Mr. Choffi.
I appreciate your reading that letter. I know it was a little longer than I first intended it to be. I appreciate that. But I just had a few questions, if nothing else. All that's before the board tonight is the zone change to a ZB-1. I'm sorry about the noise in the back. All that's before the board tonight is a change to a ZB-1 or a GB-1. Nothing, I know a GB-2 was referenced. I know some reversionary zoning was referenced. That's all that's before the board tonight, right?
This is Catherine Halpern, Chair. Yes, you are correct, Mr. Choffi. The board is just considering tonight, really all we can consider is the citizen's petition as stated, and the board is simply, when we close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations and vote, we would be considering whether to recommend or not to recommend the citizen's petition proposing to change the parcel as defined from residential to GB-1. That's all we vote on. That's correct.
Thank you. And just another question. And I feel we're using the terms applicant and petitioner interchangeably here. There's really no applicant, right? Because there's no project. There's 12 petitioners. Is that correct?
I might ask for Ally's backup on this, but yes, I believe that's correct. And again, that's another important distinction that, again, this is Catherine Halpern, Chair of the Planning Board. We are actually not considering tonight the proposed project that is being offered by the Brazes. We're not considering the site plan. We are considering a citizen's petition that will propose an amendment to the protective zoning bylaw, and the planning board will be voting on whether they recommend or do not recommend that citizen's petition. That's it. So, I think applicant is not a correct term. Petitioner may be more correct. Ally, I'll ask for your comments on that.
Hi, Catherine. Yes, this is Ally. Petitioner would be the correct usage word. And I just wanted to also say in response to the noticing question that had come up. So, yes, for special permits and variances, the abutters would be notified by the town. However, under mass general law, when there is a public hearing for a zone change or an amendment to the protective zoning bylaw, we are not required to notify the abutters because it will be going to town meeting where the entire town votes upon this request. So, I just wanted to make that distinction.
This is Catherine Halpern again. Thank you, Ally. And, Mr. Choffi, did you wish to speak again?
If I could.
Yes. Again, please announce your name.
I'm sorry. Carlo Choffi, 38 Dugans Pond Road. So, again, and it's just confusing to me that when we talk about this and the project, like I said in my letter, you know, they're interchangeable. So, you know, when we talk about notification, it's tough because I think even Mr. Litchfield said that, you know, the applicant didn't have to notify the abutters. And it's not an applicant. It's a petitioner. There's 12 petitioners. And if this was the normal course where it should be, where I feel it should be, in the zoning board of appeals, everyone would have gotten noticed. So, this is kind of a way not to notice people. And that's concerning to me. And that I was never noticed. And it just seems like everyone around me was noticed. All the properties on Main Street were noticed, including Chatham Hardware, I think even farther down than Chatham Hardware. People on Old Harbor Road were notified. I'm the only abutter that was not. And I don't know why. There's petitioners on that list I know have my contact information. So, it's a little concerning to me. It's the first time I'm hearing about this reversionary zoning. I'd really have to research it, but it seems to me that you're putting it into a commercial zone for a period of time, letting them build whatever they want to build, and then reverting it back, which, you know, I don't know what that does. It's, I don't know what that does to me because it's forever there. And like I said in my letter, I don't know why they went, if all they need is the property that they said they needed for this zone change. I don't know why it's down to the Chatham Hardware Store, which engulfs my property. And if this precedent is set, any precedent, even this reversionary zoning we're talking about, I don't know why they couldn't apply for that a year down the line. I just look at the co-mingling of a petition and the applicant, even the letters in favor, which I respect people's opinion. I don't know how many of them made reference to a zone change. They're in favor of the project, which there is no project. So, that's just my notes. I appreciate, again, I appreciate your reading the letter. Appreciate you hearing my opinions, and I'll mute out now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Choffi. Again, this is Catherine Halpern, Chair. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak in opposition of the application? I see Mr. Sharkey. Would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I did speak at the last meeting, and again, just a few points that I'd like to recap with the committee members. Both my wife, Susanna Nickerson, and I, we reside at 606 Main Street. We own the shops right up to 618 Main Street, and we're abutters to the hardware store. As we stand like at our parking area for our cars, we essentially look across the back parking lot of the hardware store into that back section of Old Harbor Road. It's a clear, visible line of sight where this new building and parking lot would appear. But with regard to the zoning, you know, we're against the zoning change on a number of reasons. One, to do so, it's going to affect that loss of split zoning that currently is in place on those properties, those four properties on Main Street, that currently require a ZBA for any, let's say, conditions or changes that they would make to that property. That hurdle would essentially go away for those properties because of this proposed change. Secondly, just again, it's a slippery slope whenever you start talking about zoning changes. If we change this lot on 22 Old Harbor Road, what other inns on Old Harbor Road would like to also extend their properties to some GB-1 type of change, or any other businesses for that matter? I would just say that Old Harbor Road today is a lovely road of mixed residential and business properties that works well. It leads into the Main Street Business District as a lovely entryway, and I would urge the board members to continue to maintain the existing zoning, which has worked for many years, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey. This is, again, Catherine Halpern, Chair, and I will ask any other members of the public who are connected who would like to speak in opposition of the current application or petition.
Hello, Madam Chairman.
Yes, please introduce yourself. Please state your name.
Hi.
Yes, please go ahead. Please state your name. I think you're still on mute. Is this Joan Kasabian?
Yes.
Susanna? Susanna?
We have another speaker, Susanna. I have Joan Kasabian has been recognized.
Oh, thank you.
So, Joan, will you please go ahead?
My husband, Ed, and I own the property at 71 Seaview Street, and it faces Dugans Pond. And I was just curious as to where this, since there's no project information, I'm just wondering how it might impact that wetlands and that wild area that we have a view of. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just one speaker at a time, please. This is Catherine Halpern. So, Ms. Kasabian, please continue.
Okay. Well, our question was regarding the Dugans Pond area that we look out onto from our back deck, and I know that the inn is kind of diagonally across from us, closer to, you know, the downtown area. We face that church steeple. And I'm just wondering, you know, how far their setbacks are and all that, and wondering how it may impact that wild area that we face out at. And I know there's, I don't know if there are any plans for the project or, you know, how far they are from the wetlands.
Okay, thank you. This is Catherine Halpern, Chair. Ms. Kasabian, we'll continue with, we'll follow our process, and we'll continue with any other public statements in opposition to this application, then there will be an opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant. So, again, I will ask, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application?
Thank you.
For this petition?
Yes. Susanna Nickerson?
Go ahead, Ms. Nickerson. And excuse me one moment. This is Catherine Halpern again. Can everyone who's not speaking, please mute your computer and also turn off your video? Ms. Kasabian, I think you're maybe, there you are. Great, thank you. And anyone else, please mute your phone. Susanna Nickerson, please go ahead.
Thank you. As I said, my name is Susanna Nickerson. My husband has spoken. He's Tom Sharkey. We own 606 Main Street to 618 Main Street. Our property abuts the hardware store that abuts 22 Old Harbor Road. We are both strongly opposed to the change of zoning from residential to business. This would be spot zoning, zoning that benefits one person, one business. We have used spot zoning in Chatham for projects such as the Village Market, where the town would collectively benefit by having a food market. If this change of zoning gets approval, our current protective bylaws will have little weight. Anybody that would want to develop their property further could simply change the zoning. The approval of this petition will remove the small amount of protection our current bylaws give us. Height restrictions, setbacks, size of buildings would all be changed, one person and one property at a time. Thank you for your consideration.
This is Catherine Halpern again. Thank you, Ms. Nickerson. And I'll just ask, again, any additional members of the public connected who wish to speak in opposition to this matter.
Catherine, it's Kevin Steinhauer.
Yes.
And I own the property at 37 Seaview Street.
Go ahead, Mr. Steinhauer.
Yes. This is a real sanctuary that is in Chatham and has been that way basically for history. And to allow one person who has a great inn, beautiful inn, takes great care of it, but to go beyond where he is is not the right thing to do. You know, we have owned that house since 1999. We take a five-hour drive, get up there about 12 to 14 times a year. One of the reasons we didn't buy in the Hamptons is because of this exact problem. And, you know, when they bought that property, they knew what the bylaws were in the zoning. We're very respectful of the property. This is the wrong place to do that. Okay? It's just the wrong thing to do, and putting extra lighting, and I heard the last time how this lighting is not going to affect anything. Yes, it will. You see lights for many feet, and it's the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhauer. Again, Catherine Halpern, can I ask if there are any other members of the public connected to the call who would like to speak in opposition to this matter?
Madam Chair, this is Carlo Choffi again. Can I ask one more question, please?
Mr. Choffi, I'll ask you to be brief and put the question in, but please go ahead.
Well, it was just mentioned in some previous correspondence and people that spoke referencing the Cumberland Farms property. That's a commercial property, though, correct? That's zone commercial, correct?
Yes.
So, that's...
This is, again, Catherine Halpern saying yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Choffi. Again, Catherine Halpern, I will ask any other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this petition. I'll wait a little while in case people are muted, then we'll move on. So, I'm not hearing anyone. So, we would give the applicant or the petitioner, Mr. Litchfield, do you want to speak? Give any points of rebuttal to any of the statements that have come up?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield, and I won't respond to everything, but I do want to comment on a couple of factual things. If at the prior hearing I said that the owner of 624 declined to have that property included, then I misspoke. That is not the case. The owner of 624 being Chatham Hardware. The owner was actually quite interested in it, but as two of the previous speakers will know and could confirm, I sat with them and told them that as a courtesy to... will know and could confirm, I sat with them and told them that as a courtesy to them as abutters, we would not propose to include the property at 624, notwithstanding the willingness of that applicant to have, that owner to be included. I understand the issue, petitioner, applicant. We are, I think, rather clearly considering the rationale for the petition to change zoning. It is plainly an expansion of the Old Harbor Inn's operations because we, we believe at least, that it's been a well-run inn, can continue to do so, and that the town's loss of downtown lodging rooms is something that should be considered. As to Mrs. Kasabian's question, I believe that her property is approximately, I've just scaled it off, and Ally can confirm and probably do it better than I, but I believe that the corner of, the closest corner of the Old Harbor Inn property to the closest corner of the Kasabian property is approximately 700 feet. The closest corner of the Old Harbor Inn property is approximately 350 feet away from Dugan's Pond. The area, the green area that Mrs. Kasabian and others enjoy looking at, and many of us have enjoyed looking at over the years, is largely owned by one of the previous speakers, and she can speak to that, but we're some significant distance away from Mrs. Kasabian's property. Mr. Hittner raised a good question as to why so much of the property at 22 Old Harbor Road was included. My original idea was to consider or to increase the zoning by, from 150 to 200 or 225 feet, thereby to incorporate a smaller portion of the property at 22 Old Harbor Road. Our zoning agent, for reasons with which one could disagree, felt that for zoning administrative purposes, it was preferable to include more of the inn. I would be perfectly comfortable with a lesser provision or a lesser extent. It's been suggested that we'd be able to build whatever we wanted to build with reversionary zoning or otherwise. I simply think that's not the case. The reason we have not proposed that the expanded GB zone include all of the property is because the Zoning Board of Appeals could and assuredly would impose limitations. Finally, the chair correctly said that you're acting on the petition, and you in fact are, but you can make a recommendation, you can make no recommendation, you can consider this further. It's been suggested that simply changing the zoning is something that can be done willy-nilly, and that somehow this, we thought relatively reasonable proposal with appropriate safeguards, that somehow that would be the end of the zoning bylaw in the town of Chatham. Zoning is, of course, a creation of the voters at town meeting, but there's nothing simple, nor would there be anything precedential about doing this if you recommend it to town meeting. So I know you've gone on, we've gone on at length on this proposal. We appreciate your consideration. We understand the neighbors' concerns. We will continue to work with the neighbors' concerns. If town meeting doesn't enact this when it considers it, which I presume to be in September, we will, in fact, regardless of that, we will continue to work with the neighbors and the planning board to see if there is an acceptable way to preserve the neighborhood and at the same time to add six additional lodging rooms in downtown Chatham. And again, we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. Again, this is Catherine Halpern, Chair of the Planning Board. So I think we will move on to the next point, which is any additional comments on the board, from the board. That would be before we would vote to formally close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations and vote. So I will go through the board and see if you have any additional comments, but before we do that, I would actually like to make a comment, which I've made several times. And that just is that a lot has been said about the project and what the current owners, the Brazes, intend to do based on this zoning change, but I must emphasize, that is not what we are considering. That is not what this board is voting on at this public hearing. The board is considering whether to recommend, not recommend, or have as a neutral recommendation a proposed zoning change from residential to GB1 for 22 Old Harbor Road by citizens' petition, which is, would be brought before the next town meeting for citizen vote. That's all we're voting on, is this change of zoning. We really do need to separate the project and the stated purpose of this zoning change. We really do need to separate that from the zoning change itself, and we also just need to be very clear that we're just voting as a board whether we recommend or do not recommend this citizens' petition for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. There were many other ideas discussed tonight about reversionary zoning, about possibly changing this to GB2 rather than GB1, et cetera, et cetera. Again, for any substantive changes in the citizens' petition that we're considering tonight, we actually do need to hold, that has to be resubmitted as a new citizens' petition for a zoning bylaw amendment, and we would need to hold a new, different public hearing on that for any substantive changes. So we can't really consider those. We have to consider what's before us as is. So that being said, I'll just quickly ask, before we vote to close the public hearing, Art Spru, any additional comments or discussion?
Art Spru, no, I don't have any more comments at this point. I'm prepared to go into deliberations.
Thank you, Art. And Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis, I do not have any points at this time.
Thank you. And Bob Worchafter?
Bob Worchafter, I have nothing at this time.
Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I have no comments to make at this time.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, and I think I've made the comments I felt I needed to make. So that being done, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations? And I will just remind the board and the public that once we close the public hearing, there's no further participation from the public or the applicant or petitioner. The public hearing will be closed, and the board itself deliberates. And again, we'll do that by roll call. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Art Spru, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
And do I have a second to that motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second the motion.
And so let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, I'm in favor of closing.
Bob Worchafter?
Worchafter, I'm in favor of closing.
Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis, in favor of closing.
Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I'm in favor of closing.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm in favor of closing this public hearing. So the public hearing is now closed, and the board is entering formal deliberations. Again, I will go through the board and see in that context, do you wish to make a comment before we go to a formal vote? So Art Spru?
Okay, Art Spru. Catherine, I, I think the challenge that we've had as a board is, once we get an application in underneath whatever zoning it is, we're really have our hands tied because we have not as many things that we put in place as part of rules and regulations. Therefore, zoning, we have to rely on zoning quite a bit as part of our decision. When you take a look at the dimensional components of the GB1, they're, with this property being abutting into a residential neighborhood, it's, it's very inconsistent with that. So I, I just, our hands would be tied, and I don't like the flexibility that we would need to have as a board. I do like some of the suggestions that were made, but they don't help really as part of this particular petition. The GB2 is very, is much more consistent with the R20 as far as setbacks and things like that, and the reversionary zoning would be something to think about, but that's not before us right now. So I am very hesitant in moving forward with a favorable vote for the GB1 expansion at this point.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. So again, we're not in a formal vote, but we are in formal deliberations. Bob Dubis, do you have comments or discussion deliberation before we go to formal vote?
Bob Dubis, I just have a consideration that most, most all of the neighbors are not in favor of this situation. The one that's right next door, I'm glad that he spoke. He spoke in favor of it, but I'm afraid it's going to change the character of this neighborhood a little bit too much for, for the liking, especially around the pond. And there's a question about Seaview Street. Seaview Street has quite the overlook over that pond and surrounding areas, so I have my reservations on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubis. And Bob Worchafter?
This is Bob Worchafter. I generally agree with what Art was saying. I also think that it would be a big push to make this change, and so I'm not going to vote for it.
Thank you, Bob. And Warren Chain, any comments or deliberations before we go to formal vote?
Well, this is Warren Chain. I can only echo the comments of the other board members. I see what we're being asked to vote on, and it's essentially a zoning change that'll benefit a single lot. There is no even proposal, as much as I value the contribution to the community of the inn. That's not anything we're discussing and, or voting on. All we're talking about is a zoning change that would benefit a single lot. I do have concerns about creep, and it, if approved, I believe that it would put at risk the zoning for contiguous properties along Main Street. That would not only affect the nature of Main Street, but also what I'll call a sensitive sanctuary area in behind and the houses on Seaview Street. So just looking at what we are being asked to look at, which is a petition, a citizens' petition to change the zoning for a single lot, I don't see anything that suggests to me that there is a plus to the benefit, to the greater population of Chatham other than to a single lot owner. As much as I, there is no other proposal to do anything on which we have any input, so I am certainly not in favor of recommending the petition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chain. Again, this is Catherine Halpern, Chair. So I think we are ready to enter a formal vote. I just, again, this is somewhat repetitive, but I want to remind the public and the board that what the planning board will vote on is whether to recommend or not recommend or abstain from voting or have a neutral, no recommendation for a citizens' petition for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. That is all that we're voting on. We are not voting on the site plan, we're not voting on the project, we're not voting, we are not voting on whether or not the current owners of 22 Old Harbor Road should or should not expand their business or expand their inn. We are not voting on that. We're not voting on, you know, whether their property looks nice or doesn't look nice or anything like that. We are a regulatory board primarily. We're also the technical review board, and we also have long-range planning responsibilities, and that is our purview, and we do need to consider this petition as it is now, not with, it's not GB2, there's no reversionary zoning, there's nothing like that, so just as it's stated now. And just, do we recommend this citizens' petition to change the zoning for this particular lot from residential to GB1? The way we would take our vote is we would ask, I would ask for a motion to recommend this citizens' petition for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and you would vote yes if you recommend that citizens' petition, and you would vote no if you do not recommend, and you would vote abstain if you are neutral or wish to abstain. So I just wanted to make that clear. So I think we're ready to enter a formal vote. And also just to remember, we're just voting whether we recommend or don't recommend this petition to town meeting. So may I have a motion to recommend this citizens' petition for the proposed zoning bylaw change to extend the GB1 zoning district onto 22 Harbor Road by the dimensions specified in the petition?
Madam Chairman, this is Bob Worchafter. I move the motion.
Okay, so you make the motion to recommend, and may I have a second to that motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second it.
Okay, so now I just, everyone's clear, you vote yes if you do recommend this citizens' petition and vote no if you do not recommend. So Art Spru?
Art Spru, I vote no, not to recommend.
And Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis votes no, not to recommend this.
And Bob Worchafter?
Bob Worchafter votes no.
And Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I vote no.
And this is Catherine Halpern, Chair. I'm afraid I must also vote no. So the public hearing has been closed, the board has been, has voted, and the board has voted not to recommend or to give a negative recommendation to this particular citizens' petition for a zoning bylaw amendment, proposed amendment. Ally, again, this is Catherine Ally, I'm just asking you if you need specific wording from the board guarding our decision that would be included in the warrant, or is it clear enough as is?
I think it's clear enough as is unless the board wants to explain why they don't recommend, but otherwise I am fine with this.
All right, so why don't I, I'll go through, I'll poll the board and ask any board members if you would like to have a sentence that explains our decision, and if so, what you would like to say. So Art Spru?
Art Spru, I think the, the points that I have been making, that you can pull from the video or the tape essentially, it's, it's too much of a dramatic change to go to from this R22, a GB1 with very, it binds our hands too much to something that is inconsistent to the residential area that it's in right now.
All right, and Bob Worchafter, would you have a comment? And then also, would you agree with what Art has just said as our explanation if we need to include one?
I really don't think we need more of an explanation than the record of the hearing.
All right.
So I'm going to ask that we don't spend time trying to refine something here. We voted no. We all have our explanation, and I think that suffices.
All right, and Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis does not think we need any explanation other than the no vote.
All right, and Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I agree with all those comments. I would not be in favor of having any explanation.
All right, this is Catherine Halpern. I think I agree with the majority of the board. I don't think we need an explicit explanation in the warrant, and I think all of our concerns are on record. And I think all of our concerns are on record. And, but I thank you, Arthur, for reminding us.
Catherine, this is Art Spru.
Yes, Art, yes, go ahead.
I'm in favor of the other board members' points of view on this.
All right, that's great. All right, so then I think we are completed with this matter. Ally, is there anything else we need to do before we go to the next item on the agenda?
No, I think you've done everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda, we are looking at some amended site plan reviews. And the first one is 907 Main Street. This is Delmar Bar and Bistro. And we're looking at a temporary, a request for a temporary expansion of seating to outdoor area due to COVID-19 emergency. And actually, before we continue with this, I think, Ally, I may have you explain. We've got several of these to consider tonight, but after this, we won't need to consider them because there will be a procedure for this type of thing that will be going through the Board of Selectmen. Is that correct? Could you give us a few more details?
Sure, yes, that's correct. The governor's order came out, I believe it was Monday, and it basically stated that waived a lot of zoning requirements for out, expansions of outdoor seating for the COVID-19 emergency. And so we internally, staff have been trying to create a policy that the Board of Selectmen will be able to sign off on to review these out, expansions of seating for outdoor seats. And that will go in front of the Board of Selectmen tomorrow at their meeting. And hopefully, once that's approved, the planning board won't see these expansions anymore. It will be a much easier process for businesses to be able to apply for outdoor seating. That does not, just to let you know, it is just for expansion of outdoor seating. So we are going to be looking at another application on the agenda for Liberty Commons. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, we will see items like that. But for expansion of outdoor seating, that will go through this process, which will be a more streamlined process. I did recommend that these two applications for expansion of outdoor seating, 907 Main Street and then also 1291 Main Street, I did recommend to the applicants that they come forward to the planning board tonight anyway, just in case for some reason it, the policy doesn't go through tomorrow. I wanted to make sure that these applicants had the ability to open as quickly as possible since they put their applications in through the planning board. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. This is Catherine. Again, thank you, Ally, for that explanation. So let's go back to the first one, which is 907 Main Street for Delmar. They're just seeking a site plan amendment to allow for temporary expansion of use to allow eight picnic tables with six seats at each table to be located outside on the north and east side of the restaurant to allow for social distancing requirements due to the COVID-19 emergency. And the applicant is proposing a barrier around the proposed expansion. And we do have pictures of the proposed barriers. There will be no increase in the number of parking spaces. The applicant is expecting that due to these requirements, they will have a total restaurant capacity of 25 to 50% of total allowed capacity. And the parcel is in the GB3 zoning district. And under HBDC's jurisdiction, the board can consider putting a condition on this application which says that this approval is effective until 45 days after the emergency order enacted by the governor is lifted or until Columbus Day 2020, whichever occurs later. So I will ask if there's any.
Can I ask a question here? Because I don't.
May I ask who's speaking? Is this Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, I heard from Katie when we were doing the Main Street that we, that we don't have to do any of these. That, that the provisions that Ally was just describing are going to be set up tomorrow and that they'll be much simpler and really not in our jurisdiction anymore. And I'm not sure that spending time tonight is necessary or beneficial to, to these applicants because we don't really know the limited requirements that are part of the, of the governor's provisions. And there is a group led by Katie that is taking care of that. And I, I think we should let them do that.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is Katie.
Please go ahead. Thank you, Katie.
Hi, thank you. And Bob is correct, but just to clarify, the reason that we thought it best for these two businesses to come forward tonight is that, that they wouldn't necessarily have to go through that process. Or again, as Ally stated, if the board did not approve the policy, then these, these applicants would have their approval by the planning board in place and be able to move forward. And so we thought it best that they continue with this application. And we will not make them go through the other formal process regarding, looking at the seating. They will still have to go to the Board of Selectmen regarding the outdoor with the expansion of premises for their alcohol license. So Bob is correct. After tonight, we, you would not see these if the Board of Selectmen approves the policy. But we did think in the interest of time for these applicants that it would be best if they had their approvals since they had already submitted these applications.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Go ahead, Bob.
Just, just as a clarification, I, we're not really ruling on any site plan laws or provisions that we are aware of. And so my concern is that I don't really know what's required by the governor's edict. And I don't know, looking at this picture doesn't, I don't know that we're helping them by saying yes is right or not. If, we're still going to be dependent on your, your expertise at this point. So if you want to say to us that, yes, they meet the governor's requirements, then we can say, okay, yes. And they get some a day, started the day early, I can see that. But I don't think we can make a judgment on whether these are in conformance with any of the requirements, the lowered requirements that the governor has set up.
This is Catherine. Katie or Ally, did you want to respond to, further to Bob's concern?
Sure. So when we were looking, you know, as Ally stated, there was a group of us that actually came together to propose the regulation, the, the, the policy that would go before the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night. And in that, part of the working group was our health agent, Judy Giorgio. And she was involved in these conversations. The idea is that once the applicants propose something, we will work with them to make sure that they meet the social distancing requirements, if you may. And that, you know, this board tonight is actually just acting on what is required as of right now under the zoning bylaw. And so again, it's, we will continue to work with the applicant to make sure that they meet the required, you know, with regards to the, the distancing between the tables and the occupancy moving forward. So again, it was just a matter of trying to get them one step closer, as we've been trying to do. I'm not sure if Ally has anything to add.
Yeah, this is Catherine. Ally, would you like to comment? And then I'll go back to Bob and other board members.
No, I think Katie pretty much stated everything that I would say as well. I concur.
And this is Catherine again. Bob, are you comfortable or do you still feel that? Yeah?
What is it that we're approving? Where are we? Because we're not, we're not approving a site plan revision. We're not approving the final drawing or setup because that, they still going to have to come to you to do that. So I, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I don't think we're doing anything by, by looking at these now and saying we like them or we don't like them, or they need to move the tables somewhere else because we don't have any basis for doing any of that.
Ally or Katie, would you like to respond? I, yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I think in the, in the interest of time, the, the idea is that the applicants had already submitted their applications to the planning board. The applicants both have extension of premises applications before the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night. And the idea is that we will continue to work with them, although they wouldn't necessarily be required to file the, the application with the, because we would utilize this plan as the application to, you know, to look at the, the proposed seating areas. And so this, you know, technically is still an extension of the site plan just for the expansion of the use, not necessarily a change to the site overall because the seating is being proposed on a grassed area. But the way the bylaw reads is that the application, or any expansion of a business requires approval by this board. And so that's why, you know, we thought it best that they could keep this application and that we would work with the applicants to get them approved for their seating as quickly as possible. So it's just, it's, it's a temporary approval of a expansion of a site plan, for lack of a better.
Right. To add, to add out, this is Catherine speaking, to add, outdoor seating is, in the case of Delmar. I think both. Yes, Bob Dubis, go ahead.
Instead of hashing all this out, we are site plan people. And we know the devastation that this virus has put on this town and the whole world. Why don't we just go ahead, give them permission to, to accept this site plan and the same with the next restaurant? And, and because we know the Selectmen and the Board of Health is going to overlook everything and see, make sure everything is fine, that this just gives them a jump start. And God knows, all the restaurants in this town need a jump start right now. So let's just approve it and let it go.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments from other board members? If not, I will go ahead and just review the proposed conditions for 907 Main Street. And our, our vote would be to approve the site plan with the conditions for the proposed temporary expansion of use due to the COVID-19 emergency. And that we do have the expiration date. That is the first condition, that it's effective until 45 days after the emergency order enacted by the governor is lifted or until Columbus Day 2020, whichever occurs later. And the physical features and data on the site plan entitled Temporary Proposed Changes, again, we're thinking of Delmar, represents the temporarily approved design and use of the subject property. In the case of Delmar, it's adding eight picnic tables to the grassy areas to the, I think it's to the east and west of the building. And any deviation from the specified use and layout constitutes a violation of planning board approval unless it is reviewed and approved by the board. And then, of course, we have our standard, all exterior lighting shall be downward casting. So are we ready to vote to approve this site plan amendment with the conditions as stated for the proposed temporary expansion of use due to the COVID-19 emergency? And this is for 907 Main Street. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Bob Dubis makes the motion.
Do I have a second?
Art Spru, I second it.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
I approve, but I, I'd like to make a comment, I guess, a revision to those plans that should, should this applicant desire to bypass all this and go with the simplified approach, that we're not holding them to the requirements that we're putting on them tonight? I, I, I hear what Bob Dubis is saying, that we want to make this easier on them. But I'm, I'm very fearful that there were a couple of statements that you just made that may actually be more strict or, or than, than what is going to be required with the governor's edict. And so I, I, I want to give them an out from us that, that we're not actually hurting them by saying yes.
Catherine?
Yes, go ahead, Ally.
So just to Bob's comments, and as Katie has been saying before, we are involved in this working group creating the draft policies. And Bob, I just want to ease your fears in saying that these are not more stringent than what would be going before the Board of Selectmen as the policy tomorrow.
Okay, then I'll vote this. That's, that's what I was trying to hear.
Yeah. It's not any more stringent at all.
Okay, thank you, Ally. This is Catherine. Thank you, Ally, and thank you, Bob Wertschfter. Warren, and we're still in the middle of a vote, so I have to get Warren Chain's vote.
Yeah, this is Warren Chain. I'm in favor.
All right, and this is Catherine Halpern. I'm, I'm in favor of approving this site plan with conditions as stated. Thank you. So let's move on. If it's all right with everyone, I'm going to, I'd like to change the order and do the other site plan, temporary site plan amendment first before we go to 895 Main Street, if that's all right. And this is for 1291 Main Street. It says Max, Chatham Fish and Lobster. Again, it's a temporary site plan amendment to allow for temporary expansion of use, allowing the reposition, positioning of approximately 36 seats up to nine tables subject to the upcoming governor's order pertaining to restaurants outside to be located on contiguous grassy areas to the east and west of the building and the courtyard area to allow for the required social distancing due to the COVID-19 emergency. Applicant is proposing a rope fencing barrier, barrier around the proposed temporary outdoor expansion. There will be no increase in the required number of parking spaces area. The number of seats in the restaurant will be limited due to social distancing requirement, requirements. The applicant is expecting that due to these requirements, they will have a total restaurant capacity of 25 to 50% of the total allowed, excuse me. This property is located entirely within the GB3 zoning district. And we will again have the condition which says that this approval is effective until 45 days after the emergency order enacted by the governor is lifted or until Columbus Day 2020, whichever is later. And I think all the conditions, again, are as stated. The temp, that it's temporary effective until, as I just stated, but the physical features will comply with the temporarily approved design and use. And all exterior lighting shall be downward. So do I have a motion to approve this temporary site plan expansion amendment?
And he makes the motion, so we can get on with this.
Okay, to approve with conditions as stated for the proposed temporary expansion due to COVID-19. And may I have a second to that motion?
Art Spru, second that motion.
And let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter approves.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And Catherine Halpern and I approve. So that is approved with conditions as stated. Next item on the agenda is again amended site plan. This is for 890, excuse me, amendment, amended use. This is for 895 Main Street. This is for temporary use by broad reach of Chatham Liberty Commons in the, what used to be Sovereign Bank. Is that correct, Ally? Yes.
Yeah, yes, Catherine, that is correct.
And Eastward is the owner, and they would be leasing it to Liberty Commons for temporary use as outpatient physical therapy services, which have been suspended at Liberty Commons due to the COVID-19 emergency. Parking calculation requires one space for every 150 square feet, which is the same as the existing use, bank use. There'll be no change in existing interior layout. Parcel is wholly within GB3 zoning and HBDC. Parcel is wholly within GB3 zoning and HBDC, and the proposed use is allowed within this zoning district. Again, this would be temporary. We would add the condition that this approval for change of use is effective until 45 days after the emergency order enacted by the governor is lifted, or until Columbus Day 2020, whichever occurs later. I'm going to just pull the board very quickly to see if you have any comments or discussion before we take this to vote to approve with conditions as stated. So Arthur, do you have any questions or discussion?
Art Spru, no comments, no questions.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, I think this is a good use of this building during this time and keeping people separated from the nursing home. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Bob Dubus. Bob Wirtzhafter.
I have no comment.
Warren Chain.
This is Warren Chain. I think it's a great use too, but I would suggest we consider that this statement that there'd be no change to the exterior existing interior layout, excuse me, actually be a condition of our vote.
All right. So Ally, can we add that as a fourth condition? That the the interior layout remains the same?
Sure, that's no problem. Catherine, do you just ask if there's any public comment as well? I know it's not a public.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no, you are correct, and thank you so much for reminding me. So and before we go to that, Catherine Halpern, I have no comment, but I do agree, it is a good use for this building and intelligent to separate the outpatient services from the Liberty Commons inpatient facility. So may I ask if there's anyone connected to the call from the public who has a comment on this particular matter, if you'd like to speak? All right, I I hear none, so let's take this to vote. May I have a motion to approve this amended use, which would be a site plan amendment with the conditions as stated? And we did add a condition that the interior layout remain the same, so we would include Yes.
This is Bob Dubus. We have no purview on the inside of that building. Ours is the outside only.
Yes, you're correct on that. Um, Ally, do you want to comment on that?
This is Ally. I do believe that the applicant has stated that there will be no interior changes, and I do believe he's also on the call, if you wanted to ask him more about that. But I believe that that's what he had stated.
Okay, but I think it is correct. It's not really within our purview, that we're just considering the change of use.
That is correct.
So then.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion, though.
Okay. All right.
This is Warren Chain again. I would agree, we normally would not have anything to say about the interior of the building, but given the nature of the request for the change in use, I think it's appropriate that in considering the change of use, that if we also respect the the statement of the applicant, that they not make a change to the interior of the building, because it might make it otherwise less attractive. I think that in this case, it is appropriate to include a condition that it not change the interior.
So I'm gonna actually refer again to Ally and Katie on this matter, because I I think the applicant has stated that we're we're considering approving the change of use, that is within our purview. But it is correct, I think generally, we do not consider, we don't have purview over the interior. Essentially, that is between the applicant as the lease, as the one renting or leasing, and the owner of the building. But Ally, do you want to comment on that? Should we?
Catherine, this is Ally. No, I would agree that we don't have purview over the inside of the building. The only things that we normally consider for the inside of the building is how much customer space is there for parking calculations purposes. And that's really the extent of our involvement in the inside of the building.
So would it be to, would it be correct to include that as a condition, because it does relate to the space? Or it doesn't really? It relates to the space and parking requirements.
Well, Madam Chairman, Warren Chain.
Yes, go ahead.
Given that we're talking about a change of use, which is temporary, with an end date that is certain, then I would suggest that either we have as a condition there be no changes, or that at the ending of this temporary change of use, that any changes be be undone, and it be left in the same condition as it is currently.
What about if we, this is Catherine speaking, if we just required that the floor area devoted to customer use remains the same, so that there's no change in the parking requirements?
Catherine, this is Art Spru.
Yes.
I I'm more in favor of what Bob Dubus has said on this. We don't have purview on making conditions associated with the interior space. I do like your statement there, though, that is, that's a general statement associated with parking, and I think that's appropriate. But
Yes.
Any any alteration or anything like that can be done without even coming before our board on the inside of the building. So that that's between the applicant and the building officials or whatever, but it's it's not our purview. Ours is site, site related. So I'm I'm not in favor of putting any conditions associated with the interior, except the general one that you just made.
Right, that that the parking requirement remains the same, because the floor area devoted to customer use would be the same as the existing use, something along those lines. Ally, can we add a condition like that?
Yep, I'll put that in.
All right. So let's add that condition, and then the other three, again, that it's temporary due to COVID-19, effective until 45 days after the emergency order enacted by the governors listed, lifted, or until Columbus Day 2020, that there's no deviations from the amend site plan amendment as approved, and all exterior lighting shall be downward casting. And now, Bob Dubus, you're gonna have to remind me, I think you already made the motion to approve this.
Bob Dubus, somebody made the motion to approve it.
With, yes, and who seconded it?
Art Spru, I second it.
Yes, and then we were already voting, and Art voted.
I wrote to approve.
And Bob Dubus voted.
I vote to approve.
And Bob Wirtzhafter.
Bob Wirtzhafter approves.
And Warren Chain.
This is Warren Chain, I approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I approve. All right, so we are done with that matter. Thank you all. And then, final matter on the agenda is the consideration of the bond release for Bailey's Path. And we did receive a letter today from Susan Ledoux of Eastward, that has requested that this be rescheduled and continued to our meeting on Monday, July 13th. So to discuss the release of the security that was posted in 2004 for the completion of the required subdivision work at Bailey's Path. So I think we do need to vote formally to continue this matter to July 13th, 2020, and this is at the applicant's request. So may I have a motion to that effect?
I'll, Wirtzhafter moves to extend this to July 13th.
Bob Dubus seconds it.
All right, and so let's vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, I approve.
Uh, Bob Dubus.
Approve, Bob Dubus.
Bob Wirtzhafter.
Wirtzhafter, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, I approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I approve of the of continuing this matter to July 13th. Last item on our agenda, we're almost there, is a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and you all have a copy of that in your packets. And this is for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, comprehensive permit application for 11 George Ryder Road South. I think it's described in your packet. And this proposal is to build two new, single-family, deed-restricted, affordable homes at 11 George Ryder Road South. Ally has kindly put up the visual of the two lots and where they are, which is, this is, will be accomplished through the subdivision of the property into two parcels. The site is approximately 20,000 square feet in size. GB3 zone has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. Page 101 Exhibit D of the comprehensive permit application explains in detail all the proposed waivers from zoning regulations requested, which includes waivers from the lot frontage requirement, roadway or butter setbacks, and parking setbacks. So I will ask if there's any discussion or questions, we can quickly pull the board before we go to formal vote. Art Spru. Yes, Ally, go ahead.
I do believe that Beth Wade is on the phone call.
Oh, all right.
She's the representative.
Okay, my apologies. So Ms. Wade, would you like to speak?
Sure, um, yes. So we also have Warren Brody, who is our permitting attorney, and he's also available. And I'm going to actually have Warren just speak and present this.
Thank you so much, and my apologies.
Not a problem.
You were connected. Please go ahead.
Yes, this is Warren Brody. I'm the attorney for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc. And what we have before you tonight is an application for a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, and 760 CMR Code of Mass Regulation, Section 56. Beth Wade is with me here. She is the Director of Land Acquisition and Project Development for Habitat. And although she's deferred to me, I'd say she's primarily responsible for the application that you see. And by responsible, I mean she deserves the credit for putting it together in such comprehensive and clear fashion as I think we're finding. I hope you all have a copy of the application.
I think we, this is Catherine. We don't, I don't think we have a copy of the full application. We do have the summary.
Catherine, this is Ally.
Yes.
The application was over, I think, inches long, so we, I sent out the link.
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
So we did receive a link. We didn't receive a hard copy.
Well, I I hope you've had a chance to review it. If not, we're here to answer your questions. So, under the application, Habitat proposes to build two new, single-family, deed-restricted, affordable houses at 11 George Ryder Road South. As you can see from the plan, there'll be one home on each parcel. One is a two-bedroom home, one is a three-bedroom home. And in the application, at Exhibits A and C, A, B, and C, we have a whole lot of information, including site plans, landscaping plans, architectural plans, and the like, which you may certainly review. The subsidizing agency for the development is the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State, under the local initiative program. Habitat was awarded this project by the town through an RFP, Request for Proposals process. And last June, Habitat and Town's Affordable Housing Trust executed a land disposition agreement for the purpose of building the two homes, subject to successful permitting of the project. And once permitting is complete, we would use our sweat equity program. By each member of the family, provides at least 250 hours of sweat equity as in effect a down payment. The purchase will be limited to families making 65% of the median income of Barnstable County or less. We will include a local preference, well, I shouldn't say we will include, we have requested the DHD allow us to have a local preference, so that one of the houses will be purchased by a local family, that is, a family living in town, working in town, or having children in the town. This is what we call a friendly 40B process. Town supports us via, so we have met with DPW, we have met with the Director of Health and Natural Resources, the Director of Community Development, Building Commissioner, the Fire Chief, Central Permit Coordinator, Ally, of course, and the Affordable House Specialist for the town. We have met with neighbors, contacted the neighbors, and this is something the town needs. We know the town of Chatham needs affordable housing. We're under the the DHCD goal of 10% affordable housing in the subsidized housing inventory. These units will be added to the subsidized housing inventory. They will be affordable in perpetuity, and a beautiful addition to the town, we believe. So we are seeking your endorsement on our application. The application is going before the ZBA on June 18th for for a full public hearing, but your endorsement is of value to us. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yes, Ally, did you want to make a comment? Then I'll go through the board. Or Beth Wade, did you also want to speak?
This is Beth Wade, and I think Warren's done a very good job presenting the project.
All right. And again, so let's, Ally, did you want to make a comment? And then I'll go through the board and see if there are questions or comments from the board.
This is Ally. I don't have any further comments, but in my staff report, I do recommend that we make a positive recommendation.
Okay, great. So any discussion, comments, or questions before we go to a formal vote on our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals on this project? So Art, any comments or questions?
No, and it looks like the applicant has done their their homework on this. I really strong support for this.
Thank you. And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I just wondered if there was any correspondence that went along with this, and if there was any neighborhood input.
Catherine, this is Ally. We haven't seen from the planning board perspective any correspondence for this. I'm not sure, though, if the Zoning Board of Appeals has, although I'm sure during their hearing at the end of this month, they will read all those correspondence into their record.
All right. And Bob Wirtzhafter, any questions or comments?
Yes, I was looking at the detail, and I see there's a use of one maximum 100-watt bulb. I'm thinking that's an old spec sheet that needs to get updated, but I do see that you were going, that you were going to get the incentive from Marshall Grid, in this case, Cape Light Compact. I I would strongly recommend contacting them for their new instructions, and that you make all of the lighting in the property up there, and not incandescent for CFL, as specified. I'm all for this.
Could I make a comment on that? This is Beth Wade.
Yes, please go ahead, Beth.
So we work very closely with Cape Light Compact, and I'll review the specification sheet, because I believe that's an error.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and let's see. Warren Chain, did you have questions or comments before we vote on our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Well, this is Warren Chain. I do very much want to do, and I I give credit to anybody else on the board who actually read the 230-page plus proposal. It's quite thorough. But I do have two questions, just for my own edification. One is, how is it that the town acquired a title to the property in the first place?
Ally or Beth, did you want to answer that question?
I can answer that, Catherine.
Thank you.
I believe that the Affordable Housing Trust purchased this property.
And so with just a public, all right, thank you. That's from my own information, because I'd like to see this duplicated again, if possible. And the second question is for Habitat, and that is, is there anything in this proposal Um, and the second question is for Habitat, and that is, is there anything in this proposal, because I don't remember seeing it, that would somehow encourage or inspire that the houses, um, be lived in as opposed to come just another addition to the short-term rental market?
Yes, Warren Brody, I'd be happy to address that. These houses must be the primary residences of the homeowners. No renting is allowed, except in the rare circumstance where, um, a homeowner is in the armed forces and is on active duty, and I think only in that circumstance can these properties be rented.
Uh, thank you, Warren. I, I thought that was the case, but I just couldn't remember actually reading it specifically. Um, so thank you for clarifying. I'm very much in favor.
Thank you, Warren. Uh, this is Catherine. I don't, I do not think I have any questions. Uh, again, if everyone could mute their, everyone could mute their phones or their computer. Thank you. I don't have any questions. Uh, I think it's a job well done. One question I had for Ally was regarding the airport, and just to make sure that this was, this property, this parcel, was not in the run, what they call the runway protection zone, so that it's not subject to any of those considerations uh, with regards to the airport, and it is not. It is outside the runway protection zone. So I think, uh, that we're, that we're good from that consideration. Uh, so can we take a vote? Do I have a motion to give a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for this Habitat for Humanity, um, Affordable Housing Trust project uh, for eleven George Ryder Road South?
This is Warren Chain. I move that we make a positive recommendation.
Uh, may I have a?
Here, I second.
Great. Uh, and Art Spru, how do you vote?
I approve, uh, approve. Art Spru, approve.
All right, thank you, Art. And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Thank you, and Bob Wirtchafter?
Bob Wirtchafter, approve.
And Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I approve.
Uh, and this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote to approve a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Habitat for Humanity project at eleven George Ryder Road, uh, as described. Um, thank you. Uh, that being said, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brody, and thank you, Beth Wade. Uh, before we close, again, I'll ask everyone to mute, and before we close, I'll just ask if there is any other member of the public, uh, who is, um, uh, in, in this call, who would like to make any comment on any matters that we've discussed this evening? And this is the Chair, Catherine Halpern. I have no further comments. So with, I'm sorry, who's speaking? Is there some feedback? Um, or is someone speaking? So with that being said, we'll move to adjourn the meeting. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn, Bob Dubus.
All right, can I have a second to that motion?
Warren Chain, I second the motion.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Uh, Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wirtchafter?
Bob Wirtchafter, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote that we adjourn the meeting. And let's note that the time is seven twenty-four P M. Thank you all for your participation.